We'll call the February 27, 2023 regular meeting of Peters Township Council to order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Shennefell?
I'm here.
Dr. Proskew?
Here.
Mr. Arcuri?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding an amendment to the 2023 Peters Township budget. This public hearing was duly advertised. Mr. Lauer?
Yes. As a result of the Peters Township Police Department's participation in the U.S. Food and Drug Administration's task force, and notably the outstanding work of Detective Ed Walker, Peters Township has received $3.7 million in forfeited funds. Expenditure of these funds is governed under rules promulgated by the U.S. Department of Treasury and the Department of Justice, and the use of these funds is limited to certain aspects of law enforcement. Representatives of these federal agencies have reviewed and approved the township's proposed spending plan. The approved plan, which covers a six-year period, prescribes a specific list of purchases for equipment and training. These funds cannot be utilized to offset personnel costs. The approved plan does include purchases aimed at assisting Shake Cog's cooperative police program, as well as the Washington County District Attorney's Office. These funds are subject to the township's appropriation process, and the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to present information concerning the proposed expenditure in 2023 and to accept testimony from the public. Because the expenditure of these funds are subject to federal oversight, it is our intention to create a separate fund associated with the receipt and expenditures. Expenditures of these funds is also governed by the township's purchasing manual, including for larger contracts, competitive bidding requirements, and award by council. So, the budget that is being proposed is shown here on the screen. The purchases that are included in this are training, in addition, with regard to training, the purchase of a firearm simulator for use by the police department. There are security upgrades to the police station that are proposed. In addition, we would like to purchase new cameras for the cars, including the incorporation of license plate readers into the video cameras, as well as the purchase of additional security cameras at intersections. This is one of the things that's proved extremely useful to the township in criminal investigations. There's money in here to purchase ballistic shields for use by Shake Cog, rifles for use by the department, improvements to the record management system, transfers, well, actually, purchases for the use of Shake Cog, including tactical vests, bodyboard cameras, and portable radios, accident reconstruction drone, as well as mapping equipment to help with reconstruction, and then also some licensing fees that are used by the equipment that is going to be transferred from the county district attorney's office to the township. So, that pretty much summarizes this. Now, the thing is, this will come back to council for an action in terms of an ordinance being adopted, and that will occur at such times the money's actually been transferred to the township, so that we cannot, under the program, expend funds until, in fact, there is that transfer. So, with that in mind, I mean, that kind of summarizes what's involved in that budget amendment.
Paul, did they just send us the entire amount?
They sent us the entire amount, and the way it works procedurally is, we have a general guideline on where this money is to be spent, and what happens is, as each expenditure is authorized to be incurred, we're then in touch with the Department of Justice or the Treasury Department, and they actually approve each and every expenditure, so there's no question that things are eligible.
And I assume that a lot of this money is covering things that we would normally pay out of our normal budget?
Well, it doesn't, in this current year, it cannot replace things that have been budgeted, but in years out where things aren't budgeted, it has the ability to be able to address some things that we might have considered spending on, but you can't replace anything that's been committed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this?
I see Mr. Walsh, the district attorney.
Jason Walsh, district attorney, Washington County, and I honestly want to say thank you to you guys for allowing the district attorney's office to participate and help, obviously, with this money to provide some equipment to the district attorney's office. We work very well with Peters Township Police Department. I have to thank Chief Grimes and Detective Walker, because we work all the time, but we all have one common goal, is to keep people safe and see justice when need be for victims. I can't think of a better thing for this money to go to than towards law enforcement, because in this day and age where resources are tight, money's tight, and equipment's tight, we really do need to fund the police. The police need equipment. The police need updates. The police need to keep being trained, and they need to be on the forefront of technology. A lot of this money will go towards that. For example, phone extractions devices, they're very expensive. Licenses are very expensive, and they could price you out. I myself, my office doesn't get a line item for phone extraction devices, so I have to try to produce that money through drug forfeiture. We have our machines with Peters Township Police Department and in my office, and we work collaboratively together, and my office being as a part of this will tremendously help us, and I can't thank you enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the audience wish to speak?
Ann Chainer, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Ann Chainer, 123 Robin Hood Lane. Are we allowed to ask, was this a result of the pharmacy situation, that prescription center plus pharmacy? Were the, I mean, can we be told?
The answer is no, it was not.
Pardon?
It was not.
It was not? Well, okay, so was it during arrest here in the township, or was he helping other?
He was helping a federal agency with their investigation.
In our township?
No.
Okay, because that's what I want to know. I mean, I want to know if we have a drug problem or something, okay? That's what I want to know. I mean, I think that's a legitimate question, don't you think?
The person that was arrested?
I mean, my god, you know, because I would think too, that it, because I asked after the last meeting, you know, what did this involve? They said white-collar crime, so, you know, and I said, any drugs involved? Also, you know, I just talked to somebody today, because I'm out there talking to people all the time, because petitions are being circulated, they're telling me they're getting notified about a Chilean robbery gang going through the township doing burglaries, and I was thinking, well, maybe that's part of it, too. They've confiscated some stuff from these Chilean people going through our township. And, you know, if we have this kind of crime occurring in this township, I think we have the right to know this, you know, know about these things. So, because people are telling me they're getting text messages about this, that they're entering through the back doors of residences. Is that true, Chief? Anybody get those texts? Is that that text? I didn't get it. I'm telling, people are telling me this. I don't go on Facebook. It's people who are putting themselves out there on Facebook, so they need to quit them.
The chief's going to talk later on.
Is he?
Maybe you could just match a few words. I know today, when I talked to the officer, one of the officers, he said there was a slight uptick in what was going on. It didn't seem that anything was out of the ordinary compared to what's been going on over the last year or so. It's just harder to catch them, because they're using round cars and all kinds of stuff.
Someone just told me, yeah, and someone in the audience just told me that their neighbor was burglarized, so I don't, you know, I just don't know. Because I don't read about this stuff in the paper. It seems like we never read about anything about Peters Township in the paper, so we need to start putting stuff and become...
Well, you know why that is. The Observer doesn't send anybody around anymore to pick up the police reports.
Well, you know, because, you know, we need to be transparent, because if we are having any crime, we need to nip it, okay? The other question I had about this was, I understand that if it was drug monies, then, I mean, and if it didn't happen in the township, then I should think we don't have to be concerned about any kind of rehabilitation for drug addicts, right? Okay, in the township, okay, all right. I'm all right with that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Anyone else from the audience want to speak? Any comments from council?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm going to talk. It was just on a hearing?
Yes, just to suggest on the hearing.
All right.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say nay. Public hearing is now closed. Move on? Next is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 13, 2023.
Oh, there's a...
An amendment?
There's a second public, a special report.
Yeah, but that's, that's under special report, Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Yes.
I don't even see the minutes on.
There's two ones.
So, it's the second one. So, I got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer, next is special reports, first is Peters Township Police Department, recognition of Detective Ed Walker. Chief Grimes?
Counsel, Mr. Lauer, thank you for the opportunity tonight. We just wanted to recognize Detective Walker tonight for that particular case. When he came to me three years ago, about three years ago, with the prospect of us placing an officer on the FDA task force, we talked through it to see how that might benefit us. It benefits us in a lot of different ways, the least of which, or the last thing that I considered in my determination to place him on that task force was the consideration that we might see something like this. It's tremendous that we've had the opportunity to advance the department, our resources, our training, and all of the equipment that we have, but his work in this case, you know, they seized 18,000 pounds of substances that are regulated by the FDA. They're not scheduled drugs, but they took 18,000 pounds of these substances off the streets. Detective Walker wrote the vast majority of the search warrants to facilitate that seizure of the lab that produced this 18,000 pounds of substances, and then a substantial amount, as you could imagine, of the financial assets of the individual who was committing these crimes, who was facilitating this production of these drugs, or not drugs, substances. And so, he put a lot of time, a lot of effort into that, and as a result, he was recognized by giving that money, you know, to Peters Township. You know, one of the things in police work that is unique is, you do all that work, you put in all that time and effort, and your reward is a piece of paper at a meeting. The township in this case benefits to the tune of $3.7 million. And so, Captain Bernetti and I just wanted to present to you, Ed, the Distinguished Achievement Award from Peters Township Police. This will come with a ribbon for your uniform as well, and we very much appreciate your time, effort, and everything you've done.
Thank you.
Chief, don't go anywhere. Next is a report on deer management program.
I'll be here.
So, this year, we entered into the second year of the sharpshooting phase of the deer management program. Just going to provide a brief synopsis of the entire 2022-2023 deer management program, which would include the archery portion and then the sharpshooting. So, the archery portion of the management program took place during the established hunting seasons of 2022-2023, which were September 17th and November 25th, and December 26th and January 28th. We utilized township parks, as well as private properties that were donated for the program. There was 33 hunters, volunteer archers in that program that we oversaw, and we removed 53 deer during that portion of the program, six of which were donated to local families through Hunters Sharing the Harvest. As far as the sharpshooting program, that began February 1st and ran through February 19th. There were three officers involved in that this year, Officer Steve, Corporal Klein, and myself. Over the course of 10 shifts, as I said, between February 1st and February 19th, we removed 250 deer from the township. That took place on the township parks, a couple of private properties, or I'm sorry, 20 total private properties, and a few other public leon spaces in the township. We focused the majority of our efforts with the sharpshooting, as we did last year, on roadways with the highest number of deer-related vehicle accidents, Washington, East McMurray, Bee Belt, Venetia, Valley Brook, and Water Dam, and of that 250 deer, 188, or 75%, were taken within a quarter mile of those roadways with the highest level of vehicle accidents. And as a result of that program, we donated over 10,000 pounds of venison to Hunters Sharing the Harvest, the Greater Washington Food Bank, Washington City Mission, Washington Food Pantry, Allenport Food Pantry, and Denora Pantry, Food Pantry, and after all those had accepted all that they could take, we actually donated venison as far down into Union Town in Fayette County to places down there for their local families in need, and it was distributed throughout Fayette County also. So, that's...
What was the total number of deer-related collisions in 2022? Where did that end up?
2022, we had 85. So, 2020, we had 91, 2021, 94, 2022, 85.
The goal is, what, 65?
The goal that we set was 65, yeah, for the program, and it's kind of something that we'll assess each year to see. The program last year didn't end until mid to late March, so we saw a reduction, but we missed the first kind of three months of the year during the program, so this first full year should be a good indication of where we're at with the program.
When you're using the sharpshooters, is there any kind of preference to take more does than bucks?
Yeah.
Because of the fact that they can have multiple?
Yeah, adult doe are the top priority, obviously, for...
Because it seems like you've got a lot more of those.
Yeah, we definitely target doe. The amount of, we removed 88 bucks during this year's program, and that was a result of last year, we focused almost solely on does based on the number of tags reissued by the game commission, so obviously, there was more bucks in those areas. We utilized the same areas this year, so we did remove a higher number of those, so...
In the archery program, do you have more archers this year than you did last year?
There was a few more, I think, we had 29 last year. We removed some last year from the program for non-performance, and we did add six to eight new applicants this year.
And obviously, that's a total failure. That's not producing.
It's removing 53 deer from the...
From some guys?
It's, it's not ideal, but...
So, what's your plan to go forward with that?
We told everybody at the beginning of the year that we're going to, you know, we asked for two deer each, which I don't think is an unreasonable number. Those that did not accomplish that will be removed from the program. The issue that we're having now, I think, like across the workforce and everything else, is we're just not getting volunteers for the program now. So, anybody that, out in the public that wants a volunteer, we're more than happy. We do proficiency testing through the summer, and we'd be more than happy to add people to the program. We have probably more people than ever now donating their property for use in these programs, so...
What's, what's your plan to recruit more of the volunteers?
We put it, we posted on, we posted online, we put it on the website and Facebook pages and things like that. There's information on the deer management program that's online now all year long, you know, so, again, we'll put a couple of posts on Facebook, and hopefully, word of mouth and gets out there, and we'll take, it will take anybody that's interested. We prefer township residents, you know, we give them preference, but we will take people as long as they're, you know, close by.
We do say we'll take anybody that's interested. They do have to pass a proficiency test, a criminal history background check, and things like that before they get put into the program.
That's probably a good goal, have to take two, because they could donate one and keep one.
Right, and it's pretty reasonable. At the end of the day, we try to, you know, keep in our minds that it is volunteer, you know, they're not getting paid to do it, everyone's busy and doing their thing, so two's a very achievable and realistic goal, I think, for everyone who's out there hunting. That's kind of how we came up with that, so, and all the spots we have, there's no excuse not to take two deer with the amount of deer we have in the township, so...
So, the last two years in the February call, we take, what, almost 450? Is that right?
375 in the last two years, just with the sharpshooter program, so once you throw archery into that, over 400.
Is the game commission still telling you there's no way to have numbers for what's killed for crop damage?
Correct. I happened to speak with the lieutenant colonel from the game commission last week, and he told me to continue to do what we're doing, and reach out, and we needed further assistance from them.
Tarnogler, there's only one crop, one farm in the township that's shooting deer due to crop damage, and we've spoken to the gentleman doing that, and he's given us the number of deer that he's taken. However, that's across multiple properties, not just those in the township.
What is that number?
I don't have it offhand. I'm going to say between 150 and 200, but we have no way, yes, but that's not all in Peters Township. Those are on various properties owned by that farm. At least that's what we're being told, and the game commission has been unable to provide us with the definitive...
And that seems strange, because as you know, when you report a deer after you kill it, you select what township. It seems like it should be pretty simple for them to pull that up, so...
No arguments here.
Now, what do they, the number of tags, the number of tags that we, you guys get for the February call, how does the game commission base, what do they base that number on?
They look at the size of the community, the number of accidents we're having, the number of deer complaints that they respond to each year. So, when we submit the permit, it goes to a local office, they review it at their level. If they approve everything, it gets sent to the regional office, they have biologists look at it based on our area, and then, once the biologists approve it, it gets sent to the headquarters in Harrisburg, and it's ultimately approved, reviewed, and approved finally by them. I think there's only 10 or 12 of these permits in the state, so they really thoroughly review it and...
So, that is taken into account, like if you hit your quota in two weeks, perhaps maybe they...
Absolutely, and they do, yeah. They look at all that, and then that'll be something we'll address with them in the following years.
And to have taken 250 deer in three weeks' time, nine shifts, is nothing short of the norm, but that alone tells you how many deer are out there.
Well, yes, there were 14 of them in my backyard today, so I was going to say, obviously, there's plenty more of them left here.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any audience comments on the deer management program?
General Walkland, I think you hear from me every time we have this deer-killing situation. Did I miss the vote on whether we were having a hunt this year? I followed pretty closely, and the only thing I followed was, we voted for them to get the permit. Did council vote to actually have the hunt?
What they voted on was filing for a permit, and what that implies is that, in fact, with a permit in hand, that we would do deer calling.
But last year was really presented as a pilot program that we'd watch very closely, so I think that it's very misleading to apply for the permit automatically granting the hunt, because last year, we let them apply for a permit, then we revoted on actual hunt or not, and I was watching closely, and I assumed to some other people that it wasn't voted on, yet then I come to find the hunt is already gone, already done.
I don't disagree with him either. I was surprised when I got the doc to see that it was already done.
I mean, did we advertise, as the game commission says on the website, to not feed deer in the township during that period? I didn't see that on the website this year either.
I don't believe that that was on the website this year.
Isn't that part of the permit?
I think you're right. I will tell you that the reason why that is, is the intent is to be able to get deer to the place where the hunt is occurring.
I know. They're supposed to be advertised.
Can I finish? There was obviously not a problem with being able to attract deer to the sites where the hunt was occurring. That's why in nine shifts, they were able to remove 250 deer. So, I understand, you're absolutely correct, and technically, that needs to be advertised.
They violated their permit by not advertising it properly? I mean, I don't think I'm going to stop the deer killing, don't get me wrong. I just think we have to dot our i's and cross our t's, and just Mr. Steigl saying he thought the same thing I do shows information didn't flow very freely. Thank you. Paul, going forward, let's just do it the way we did last year. We applied for the permit, and then, or vice versa, we applied for the hunt, and then we applied for the permit, or what do I, and I think he's right, if the permit requires that we advertise, we have to advertise.
All right, the way that you understood from henceforth, if we move to, if we approve applying for the permit, that's approving the hunt.
What we can do is, when the motion is made, it can be made to apply for the permit and authorize the hunt.
All right. Anyone else with a comment on the deer call? All right, then we'll move on to audience comments. This is the part of the meeting where anyone in the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Ms. Shennefell, I see you already stood up, so...
I'll let that gentleman go to continue to talk before me.
Can I introduce you by hand or anything?
There's a sign on the sheet there. Just tell us your name and your address, sir.
Hey, my name's Paul Watson, live at 301 Sugar Camp Road, and about the DOT, when I called the police one time about the traffic and the cops and, I guess, all the construction going on, I asked them, I says, well, aren't these trucks supposed to be covered, no jake break coming through, or this or that? And I had, I talked to at least three officers, and none of them said they don't know nothing about it. And I know South Park has a DOT officer, Bethel Park, Elizabeth Township, all of them, and it's to protect the roads, the bridges, infrastructure.
We do as well, don't we?
Who is it?
Chief, you're going to have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, because when I called, they says, we don't...
When did you call them?
Peters Township Police.
But when?
And when I, they know me first name, they know everything about me.
I don't know. So, we do have a DOT officer. He was approved last June, I want to say it was last June. He has since been in the rotation. He works with South Park, with Bethel Park, with Jefferson Hills. We do have DOT sets, rarely in Elizabeth, but they do work in Elizabeth, but they do come to Peters.
This is what they, and they ask me...
That's a specialized skill, not every police officer understands.
I understand, but however, there's some common sense factor. You know, when you blow down the residential area, and they're blowing off their jake break, or they're covered, they're...
So, jake break's a separate issue.
Isn't that by ordinance?
Jake break, we, and Mr. Lauer and I have had this conversation or something.
They ask me, they says, well, did you film it? That's what they ask me, did you have been on film? I'm like, are you kidding me?
We can have this conversation, none of them, I don't know if this is a conversation of...
I give five minutes. I'm just saying, you were talking about the police issue, you know, these are things that come up, because I live here. What I'm up here about is that the encroachment, where that I'm working, I come down in my yard to clean up the sticks, and there's markings everywhere, and I don't know what's going on because of the water and the sewage and everything, and every time or any time I talk to anybody, they says, oh, we're doing this and doing this, and I'm like, well, what, about what?
Where on Sugar Camp do you live?
301, Brookwood and Sugar Camp. 301, Brookwood and Sugar Camp, right across from that big plant.
Oh, the reason why you have markings that have been the result of somebody's made a one call, no doubt in reference to that plan, so they're locating the utilities.
For what? For my property?
No, for the utilities in that general area.
It's green for sewage, because they've got the tags.
And there will be, and I can't tell you where that extension is coming of. I don't know whether you know that. But there will be a connection on to the sanitary sewer system from that plant. So whenever there is any major project...
There's nothing coming from their plant. It's on my side.
Whenever there is a major project, there's a one call, and they'll identify everything out there, even things that aren't impacted. And that's what that, no doubt, is about.
That's not true.
Well, that is true.
Because they tore my gas line, my tracer wire. They tore it up, and I had to call a fire department for them to make sure there was no gas leak. And everybody said, that wasn't me. The contractor, everybody. They said it wasn't me. And the wires torn up. The police, they took a port. You know what I mean? Every time I turn around, if I go to work, I come back, something's destroyed, it tore up. And I'm like, well, what's going on? I see the green markings, and I'm asking, what's going on with it?
Well, the green markings would be for the sanitary authority. They've come out based upon a one call. And all they're doing is identifying where their line is.
Columbia Gas, when they came on here to repair my hot, repair it, they told me, they says, before this was started, it all should have been all marked out regardless of needed or not needed. And nothing was done.
Well, you're correct. That's the way it's supposed to be. Before they start working, they're supposed to come out and mark all the...
Yes, everything. And nothing was done. And that's why he was explaining it to me. A guy from Columbia Gas told me this, not the town.
It's not the township that comes in. It's the developer's responsibility to call.
But they didn't do not the same thing with the dirt. When they're down there, they're not even working in that plant. All they're using it for is storage. They're down there seven in the morning, moving trucks, this and that. They're not even working. They're just hauling and using it for storage. That's a fact. I mean, you know, what do you want? I'll film that every morning and show you, and then you can say, you know, they're supposed to be working, not storage. They're supposed to be cutting out on the dirt. They don't. Only right now, because it is weather.
Mr. Law, can we send someone out to take a look at Mr. Watson's situation?
Absolutely.
All right. You'll report to us, so that person will report to us at the next meeting.
Yes.
All right.
I'll be up here every Monday.
You're more than welcome.
I'm tired. I mean, you know what I mean?
There are plenty of seats.
We're not here every Monday.
I don't want you to show up and...
So the DOT officer in Peters, and then I can find out when he's working and everything else.
Yeah, just call.
Call you? All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments?
Do I have to sign in, or can I just say my...
No, you've already signed in once. You've already signed in.
Ann Chaner, 123 Robin Hood. I'm just wanting to inquire, since you all have budget in your heads now, about the comprehensive plan, okay, because that is in your budget. And I want to know, are we going to have hearings concerning that?
Yes, there will be hearings.
Hearings? Okay. So we don't know if we'll break down into committees to discuss that?
We're probably going to discuss that a little bit later.
Yeah, but the whole process by which the comprehensive plan will be developed will be part of the request for proposals that haven't even begun to be drafted yet. But the council has always valued public input, so there'll be, just as there was the last time around, a robust forum for the public to offer comments.
Yeah. But I'm talking, because I did attend the comprehensive committee meetings too, where we gave suggestions, what should be done, okay? And nothing ever gets done. Nothing was ever done, okay? So I'm complaining again about the comprehensive plan, because I hope it goes better this time. Because ever since 2004, you know, we always talked about single-family dwellings affordable. I should put that word in there first. Affordable single-family dwellings. Because now that we have this wonderful new school up there that we paid a lot of money for, we're going to have to fill it up, okay? And young people are the ones who have children, not people my age. So you need to have affordable housing for the younger people to attract them to this township. And they, you know, I'm sorry, I drove around the township purposely today to look to see where some new developments are, you know, the land's being dug up and all that. And I'm thinking there's going to be big mansions there again, okay? So I just want to know. I want to keep you guys on your toes, because you need to think about the young people, and how can we attract them here? Also, I think, I was out getting signatures, and I was told by some people, why don't you talk to council about getting affordable housing for elderly people? Because they want to maybe downsize out of their house, but they can't stay in this township, not with the carriage houses they have at the prices they have.
I don't disagree with you, Ms. Chaner. I mean, the problem we have, we can't control the market. We can legislate whatever. We can legislate from a zoning perspective as much as we want, but ultimately...
Well, they did want to...
You know, the developers...
No, 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 no. There was an apartment building that was maybe going to go up on Water Dam, and I guess you guys nixed it. I don't...
Those units, those units were going to rent $5,000 a month.
Well, I didn't know that. Okay, I'll take that back then. So you ought to be concentrating and thinking about something that is affordable for people, that don't want to go into nursing homes, okay, because they don't need to. I mean, I have my right mind. I'm not a young chick or anything. And I plan to keep my mind in pretty good shape for a long time. But, you know, you just need to, if you want people to stay here, you need to have more affordable housing. And I know that a lot of people like to look at the vacant lands that we have, and they don't want anything built on that. But like I said before, when I attended that comprehensive planning committee meetings, they told us we were going to be in big doo-doo. That was the term they used. Big doo-doo, if we don't do something about our tax base, okay? And that is also for our schools. And it's young people who have children, okay? And I don't see how we attract that with the continuation of these big homes and no affordable housing for young people. So please keep that in mind. My other question is something I asked about before. Did the traffic guy ever do anything about the stop sign? Is that in the works, or what?
Which one?
There is a metas. We're waiting, the traffic engineer has looked at that situation. He's recommending that a stop sign be put there. We're waiting for that report.
Oh, very good. Thank you so much. Those people will be so happy, and I'll let them know that. Okay.
Well, just so that we're clear, that needs to come back to council. Council has to authorize it.
You need to go stand up there.
Ms. Chaner, since you mentioned that, from the time you came to the meeting, you mentioned that every time I drive up there, I stop at that intersection.
Do you? Thank you very much, because those people complained to me. That's in my precinct, and they complained about it.
You're exactly right, because you come straight up.
Yes. They just whip around that corner there. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item?
Bob Simmons, 170 Simmons Road. I've been a resident here in Peters Township for 60 years, and I've been farming here for about 60 years. I just wanted to talk to you tonight just real quick, a couple of comments about the very rapid rate in which we're losing farm land. People always walk up to me and say, you know, we love having you here, we love farms, we want farms to be here. And yet, in the last, just in the last few years, we've lost about 200 acres. One would have been the Minici Farm, which is now just about, just about farm development in Tuscany Part 1. Haven Farm, which is going to be Tuscany 2, Gierhold Farm, and the Lutz Farm, totaling about 200 acres. And I do believe that I know a little bit about why that happened. And because, the reason I do is because every time those properties were being sold, I talked to the owners, the farmers, because I leased that farm, I farmed all of it. And their comments to me were consistent. One was the taxes doubled. Okay, the taxes, and I don't think a lot of people know that. The taxes on farms in Washington County roughly doubled. Mine went from $17,000 a year to $40,000 a year on my farm. But they doubled. That was in 2017. That was the reassessment. So that hurt the farmer. And then, the other thing that they always bring up is, and they say, well, you know, in Peters Township, you know, they took something else away, and that's my gas and oil rates. You ban drilling from the farms in Peters Township. And I assure you, each and every one of those farmers, if they had the money coming in from the royalties like Peters Township does, from the royalties of gas and oil, they would have not sold, and they would have stayed, because they had some income, they could pay their taxes. I was paying them to lease their property. They would have not sold. So it is my, not even belief, I say it's a fact. Those four or five developments would not have happened if you would not have banned gas and oil drilling. So what did you do? You stopped a pad from coming in Peters Township, and it wasn't going to be on my farm. But you stopped the pad that would have pretty much gotten the whole township. There would have been six to eight months, and I know that's a fact, because I farm a farm in Nottingham Township. I've been there for 10, 12 years. I've watched the pad. It's one of the biggest pads around. And there was about six to eight months, there was a lot of traffic. There was a lot of activity. But it's beautiful. It's landscaped around now, trees around it, and there's nothing going on except gas coming out of the ground. So you traded that off, and now we're going to have a whole bunch of developments. Construction, grading, changing of the land, tons and tons of activity due to the development of these properties. So I think you did a real disservice to the township by banning the drilling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, council. Bob Donan, 107 Southview Court, McMurray, PA. I'm back again about the dead trees in the park. So I think the first time I was in here was maybe three years ago, maybe four. And in the interim time, three weeks ago in the Post, because that was this article written about the gentleman in Upper St. Clair and his wife who died the next day after they were hit by a falling branch. It says, Art's been his refuge since a freak accident in June 2021, when the South Fayette man lost his wife and mother of the two sons, Cara Leo, and suffered a spinal cord injury that forces him to use a wheelchair. On a sunny day with a slight breeze, Quinteros and Leo were on a stroll on Morton Ravine Trail in Boys Mayview Park up at St. Clair when they heard a series of loud snapping sounds. Then a large decayed tree branch suddenly came crashing down, striking Quinteros in the back and Leo in the head. He said he knew as he lay on the ground, unable to move his legs, he would never, likely never walk again. A trained DMT, he also knew while calling to his unresponsive wife that she would probably not survive her injuries. That's Cara Leo. She was 40 years old, died the next day. Passer by heard his cries and got help, but it was too late. Leo, 40, a pastry chef who owned her own bakery in Mount Lebanon, died the next morning. Quinteros now uses a wheelchair. It's been along 19 months for him and his two sons, Oliver and Owen. "It's been difficult," he said. "It's a daily struggle to rise above the depression, the sorrow, the grief. It's a fight." The three of them survived by relying on each other. Quinteros said so much of their mother is in their two boys. He filed a lawsuit against the municipality that owns the park for neglecting to maintain trees along the trail where the accident happened. He said he filed the suit so that no one else's life will be endangered there. Quote, "Ideally, I'd like to see Upper St. Clair take care of their stuff, clean their trails and do all that, so it doesn't happen to someone else. I feel like if I don't say anything, if I don't do anything about it, and someone else gets hurt, well, that's on me." So, in my words, for years now, I've been alerting council to hazardous trees in Peterswood Park, like the one in the photo on the right. It's right by the Eagle Scout Bridge. There are two of them there. Those of us in the tree profession call them widow makers, and for good reason. This particular tree hasn't had any bark on it for several years now, and it's an accident waiting to happen. It has a dead twin beside it, and they reside next to the Eagle Scout Bridge near what we hope will never be called Dead Man's Curve. Enough excuses. It's time for Peters Township Council to find the money to remove the rest of the hazardous trees in our parks, beginning with the ones near paved trails like the one in the photo.
How many years ago did you first identify that one?
I didn't dig through my emails to see how long I've been trying to...
And it's still there now, you're saying?
Oh, yeah. I mean...
Yeah, so Paul, there's no excuse, I think.
I won't offer you an excuse. I know that the Public Works Department, based upon Mr. Donan's comments before, removed a number of trees. I would have assumed that those trees would be gone. But Bob, if you can leave me those pictures, I'll make sure those trees are cut down.
But that's more than that. I mean, this has been a winter that the road department has certainly not been pressed into service for snow and ice and things of that nature. I walked the trails this past weekend, and there have been red Xs on trees out there for the last two or three years that are still standing. And I don't understand what our manpower, why our manpower this winter couldn't have taken advantage of making a more extensive effort into that. I'd like to know what they've been doing when it hasn't been snowing. As far as the jake breaks, yeah. They were killing us on Thompsonville Road this summer, building Juniper Woods, pouring those concrete foundations. But I'll leave that at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak on a non-agenda item?
Hey, Paul, do we do all that, we don't do all of that tree cutting in-house, right?
Oh, no, we don't, because particularly some of the trees are such that we're not capable of doing them.
So do we have a line budget item for that?
We budget, I think this year it's $60,000 to remove trees. And we spent that last year as well. So the tree problem is...
Well, I know at one point, we talked about focusing on like those ash trees, because the ones that were dead, they have a tendency to, what do you call, fall over.
And we've cleared out roadways. We've done a hard section of the trail right down here. I'm a little taken back about these trees still being there, because the Public Works Department was directed to address these trees that Mr. Donan has brought up previously.
Do you think that you could, I'm not saying for the next meeting, but like in the foreseeable future, you know, get some input as to like, how many trees have the public works actually in-house cut down and removed? And how many, you know, how many, I guess we use A&amp;S or some...
We use A&amp;S most of the time, but not all of the time, based upon...
I mean, just to get an idea, because I mean, if we had to, you know, hit this hard, it would be a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, and it will continue to be a lot of money. And the problem is own, you know, is one that's out there that needs to be addressed every year. This will never go away. We own too much land, and...
Well, is there any opportunity that we could timber some of that land and get paid for them to remove the trees? I'm not saying make it barren, just, you know, thin out the herd or whatever.
Not the trees that we're cutting down, I don't think.
Yeah, they're not commercially viable at all.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Claudia Wagner, 150 Thomas Road. I have to admit, I'm a tree hugger, okay? I love Peters Township. I love having trees. I didn't even plan on talking about this, but that whole stretch of Frobe Road that they took down every dagon tree, you know what I'm talking?
Yes. We all know.
That is, that is a disaster. That's terrible.
Well, there's...
It could be a beautiful spot. I know. There's going to be a community.
There's a development going in there.
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't want to live there. It's like on a steep hill. But that's just me. So Frobe Road, Peters Lake Trail, can we get it mulched? Can we have a group of young people? And I, my husband and I'd be happy... Can we have a group of young people, and I, my husband and I'd be happy to be with them, help them, and get, just bring in some mulch and mulch, it's, it's so hard to walk around there. If you've not walked around there, go walk.
And somebody made a significant effort right there at the bridge that you were talking about earlier, with mulch and...
Yeah, well, keep going, because it's...
I, I know the, I live along there, so I know it.
It's really, I mean, the roots, you cannot take your eyes off of the ground, because the roots, there's so many roots sticking up.
Well, see, and that's one of the problems, ma'am, we discussed that in the past, but if we throw mulch over it, you hide the roots, and then, you know, it's easier for somebody to trip then, because if the roots are covered in mulch and you're walking, you don't see...
We need to get the mud.
It is so muddy.
I know, during the winter time, it's almost impossible to walk around there.
But anyhow, that, those are just two of the concerns I have, but another thing is, I guess the pool is next, for now, is that correct? The pool that we were going to have?
It's certainly on hiatus right now.
Okay.
The council will make a determination if in fact...
Can I, can I just recommend that if we are going to put a pool in this township, that we cover it so that senior citizens and everybody else can swim in it during the winter, because we have three months on a year to swim. And, I mean, you go to Upper St. Clair, you go to all these other communities that have a community center, a swimming pool center, we have nothing like that for elderly people, you know, and we would like to be able to do water aerobics, water walking, I mean, I've done it in other pools, but I have to go out of the township to do everything, you know? So I think we have not made our township accessible or attractive for people that are getting older like me, because there is no senior citizen housing, or housing that's on a one, you know, one floor. Now, I, I'm lucky, I have, I have a house and it's on one floor, but there's a lot of people that would like to have that, you know, and they can't even afford to move because they're going to trade this $300,000 house for a $500,000 carriage house. So I'm all for having a little bit of stuff like Mount Lebanon has, and I'm sorry if you're going to diss me over that, but Mount Lebanon is very attractive to everybody. There's elderly, there's young people, there's middle age, they have a lot of amenities, and they have high taxes, too. And, but ours aren't any cheaper, I mean, their taxes aren't that high. But anyhow, I would just like to see you guys really consider a pool that's covered, it's possible, other communities have done it, and it would be open year-round, and the elderly and the young people could go and swim. And it would be a great place for people to congregate. I mean, you go over to Upper St. Clair Rec Center, you go to Bethel Park, there, why? Why do we have no community center, or why in this township? I mean, I know everybody can afford their own pool, or so that's what they say, well, just build your own pool, but that doesn't solve the problem of community. Still, it'd be nice to have a community, a place for community to gather, which, the Rolling Hills Park is a great place, I'm happy that it's there, and I'm sad that we're not going to have a pool, so. But if you go to do it, cover it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Wagner.
Another audience comments on a non-agenda item.
Seeing none, we will move on.
Well, we got one more.
I looked down too quick.
Hi, I'm Mary Mutsura, 208 Lakeholder Drive, and I didn't plan on coming in, didn't plan on speaking, but I watched last meeting and something really, really disturbed me. When we were talking, you were talking about the voting, voting precincts, I used to...
That's next up.
Yeah, I know it's coming up, so that's why I want to bring up a point, because...
Well, if it's on the agenda...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
If it's on the agenda...
This is not, no, I'm talking something different from what's on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with what we're going to do and make them more even. What bothered me was the overly zestful Mr. Wrenz coming up here worrying about his partisanship, of how the, whatever parties, and how they figure out who the representatives are. You keep that out of this room. That doesn't belong in here, okay? It was so over the top, I thought. He brought it up, you brought it up.
Well, mine wasn't partisan.
You brought it, I mean, you were talking about part, about...
I was trying to make it such that the Democrats or the Republicans, whoever was in a, whether it be a committee position or whatnot...
Committee positions should not be, they're none of our business, right? Do you agree with that?
Well, I don't want somebody to have to lose their position over something that we already are in charge of.
Well, do you care? You're, you're representing...
It's bipartisan is what I'm talking about.
But you're representing all of us. I mean, the fact that you all happen to belong to that party, you can't, you can't ignore that this is supposed to be a government, it's a separation. All right, you can disagree with me, and that's fine, but I just wanted to plead that we have, pretend to be a little more neutral, nonpartisan, when we're talking about, I mean, this is a good move you're making, is making these, these voting precincts more equal. I agree with that. So, it, while I have three and a half minutes, I want to just, what Annie was talking about as far as planning for more affordable housing, I have three friends who've lost their husbands, they got a downside, their kids are gone, they can't, number one, they can't afford to, if they do sell their house, they can't get in anywhere in Peters. They have parents that are here, they have brothers and sisters that are here in their homes, but they, there's no place for them to move to, and they're not that old. I mean, I mean, this should be a place where family can move in and plan on staying. Do we have to make a second plan to relocate when our, when a family's, you know, when people retire? Is that part of America's plan, is we have to make these major moves into more affordable projects? Or can we figure out a way? I have an idea of making, kind of even improving, the reputation of our township, which isn't, I mean, I, as far as I know, I moved here in 2003, and I've seen Peters Township hit the national news three times, and they were not for good things. They were not good things. You probably know what I'm talking about. Most of the stuff happens with kids and schools and things like that. But let's make an effort, when we're doing our, our plan for the future, to see if we can do a little branding, a little marketing, like making Peters the, the place where people come to play in South Hills. And, and make it fun, and make, and put in those, I'm still plugging for the, the Aquatic Center, although I think it was very unrealistic to get everybody excited about it and have a low budget. I mean, did we not have a ballpark to shoot for, because 10 million, really? You know, we didn't know prices were going to jump up like they did, but anything over 10 million, and we're, we're taming the whole idea, right?
No, that's not correct.
Is it?
It is not correct. We just have to sit down and figure out, to reconfigure the park to a more realistic plan, given the, the economics of what was developed in there to begin with.
You were the one that, that made me think about, the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. And so I am thinking about the older generation, exactly what Claudia mentioned, too, having an indoor swimming facility that seniors, and maybe, what happened to the high school? We used to be able to, they had open swim, maybe when you get...
We have a meeting with them next week?
Yeah, I was just going to say, when you meet with them in the workshop, maybe we could ask them for some help with this, working together with the school districts has always been one of my favorite things. And finally, Earth Day coming up, cleaning up Peters Township, I know I, I went out and did it myself last year, let's see if we can get some real momentum, get some teams out there, I want to see, you know, some community, and I had met with Ryan already at, in the QB, and so we're going to do everything we can, trying to get groups of students out there and things, but that's a positive thing, and I hope you all stand behind it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, audience comments going once.
Christina Romano, 626 Seanic Ridge Drive. I just want to comment a little bit more about the burglaries that have been going on in the township, and I understand that, you know, we need to protect the integrity of all investigations, but most of us have been finding out the information through the trickle-down effects, you know, of the Peters Township grapevine, and some of it was accurate information, some of it wasn't, and, you know, I just would like something to happen to maybe form a better communication between township officials and the public, so we know what's going on. We have a lot of people that have been, you know, nervous, upset, you know, not knowing if these suspects have been apprehended, you know, who they are, what they look like, where they come from, I mean, it's all, you know, we did have the police statement on Facebook earlier today that I saw, but the first burglary in this little bout was the beginning of this month, so, you know, and also I, I found out from other social media that it's also happening in places like Upper St. Clair, Neville Wood, other places in Allegheny County, and it's the same mode of operation with these criminals, where they're breaking in through the back door, they're using glass breakers to get in, so they don't set the alarm off by opening the door, they just, you know, if you don't have a glass break sensor, the alarm doesn't go off and alert the police. So, I, you know, I looked into some other townships, and Jefferson Hills actually has a public safety committee that's formed of council members, I think they said the finance department, some people from the police department, and they meet once a month, and it's open to the public, and they discuss various threats that their community faces. And another thing I heard that I thought was a very good idea, Upper St. Clair Police Department has a program where residents of the Upper St. Clair can volunteer to have their name and their number put into a database, so that if there is a criminal crime committed in their local area, that police know to call them to see if they can access the external cameras that they have. So, you know, I just wanted to make a point of, you know, hoping that we have better communication about various threats that we face here in Peters.
Are you aware that the police department has a citizens academy that they run?
Yes.
I, I would encourage you or other interested people to participate in that, because it opens a huge door. I've gone through it, I would recommend really all of our residents, and I'm sure you don't have room for them all, you know, take time.
We have, for more right now, aren't we, we're registering people right now?
Yeah, I knew that because the sign had been up, but that's an excellent place to get some of the insight as to what they're dealing with from their side, as well as they're very receptive to listening to the comments of the people that are there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. One more?
Thanks, everybody, for being here, thanks for your time. I'm Kim Clarkson, I was excited to hear that we're going to have a swimming pool, and I thought that it would be important if it's year-round covered, that we can support, so it would be a nice feature for, for the township. So when that comes back up, I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to...
But Shainer, you have to come up so the microphone can hear you.
Well, I, in defense of Mr. Steigl, I mean, I was at that meeting, and Mr. Wrenz was not, I don't feel he was bringing politics into this room, I think that he asked a legitimate question, and Mr. Smith had indicated the same situation had happened to him that he had brought up. So, I, I, you know, I was here, and I do not feel that that was, okay? So, I just wanted to clarify that, put that on the record.
Okay. Seeing no one else, we will move on to unfinished segments. First thing, approval of voting districts map.
So Peters Township Council has an obligation following the census to adjust voting districts to ensure that each district has a similar number of residents to accomplish this goal. We've attempted to balance the number of homes located across each of the four districts. The map that's up there now shows what the current district looked like, and what's being proposed is something that, that looks like, like this. The question that was, that was brought up at the last meeting was to provide you information about what the impact are on people who man those polls, and so we got a hold of the Director of Elections in Washington County. So the redistrict is, its primary function is to create four districts for the election of, of council. But where, what it also impacts is 12 judges of election and 24 poll watchers. One of the things that the county was able to provide us for most individuals was their addresses, so we could see what the impact was. So out of the 40 people who participate, are either elected or participate in the election process, there'll be four individuals that will be impacted. Now, what the, what the Election Department has the ability to do is to appoint people even outside of the area in which they are currently located, to serve their, that function until the next election. And my understanding is that kind of thing has happened in the past, but that's not a decision the township's going to make, that's a decision that Washington County Bureau of Elections is going to make. I will tell you, one of the things you got complimented on was the fact that generally no one has a concern about this, who does redistricting, and it leaves the, the Department of Election in the lurch in terms of, of this. The, so the, the process is that if you're satisfied with this proposed map, you would adopt it by ordinance, and that ordinance is, was not in your document, but it's in front of you tonight. That would go then to the Bureau of Elections in Washington County, who needs to go to court to have it approved, and so this, these new voting districts and election places wouldn't, would not be in place for the primary election, but would be in place for the election in the fall, since there are no council people by district being elected this, this time around, it has no impact. But, but I personally think the value of getting these in place this fall is that as you have a presidential election coming up, you have people who don't normally vote participate in that election, and this will help educate people as to their voting ways.
Paul, I, I have a question. Who drew, who came up with this? Us?
This, it was the, the GIS Coordinator for the township, and what...
The reason I ask that is that, you know, I'm looking at, at, at your, at the ordinance, and it says, "The Municipal Reapportionment Act further requires that the district shall be composed of compact and continuous territory as nearly equal in population as practicable, as officially and finally reported in the most US, in the United States." Well, you're doing it, we're doing it by houses, and not population. How can that be? I mean, you could have 1,000 houses, and you get one person to live in an area, and one, and one, one person's in that house, and you got 1,000 in another area, and you got four people in that house. I mean, how is that apportioned according, according to what this reapportionment act assumes to suggest?
Well, and if I can, the, the census does not provide you information in that kind of detail.
They don't tell you how many people live in the house?
They don't tell you how many people live on a street, and, in a house on a street. And so even when the last time this was done, the approximation is, is that there is an average number of people living in, in, in a home, and the thought is that if you can get closer to balancing the number of homes, that you can then, then it be an approximation that you've balanced the population. It certainly is far closer than what you see here, where on the one side of this chart, it shows the existing number of homes, in one, one district being 2,500, and, and District C, it being 1767. So when you get done with this, what, what you have is by equalizing the homes, the thought is that you've done a much better job of equalizing the number of, of people in each of the districts. And it's an approximation, there's no question about it, Mr. Burden.
That doesn't sound right to me.
But I don't think there's any other way to do it.
Well, sure, there is. I mean, people live in the house.
You can think of it in terms of how many voters in that house.
Yeah, I wonder if the, can tell us how many voters vote each precinct?
It isn't all that.
It's not based on...
But that's not the basis upon which you do... It can't be the basis for that. The basis has to... It has to be population, because, because some people may not choose to vote, then next year, or next election, they may choose to vote.
Or they're under age.
I think it's just a criteria.
Right, or they're under age, right. So I don't think it could be based on that criteria, it just seems odd to me that, that, that... criteria. It just seems odd to me that the act, the reaportment act says, you know, based on an equal population. And really, you're just, I mean, there's no, in my opinion, there's no correlation between having 2,000 houses in each district doesn't mean that the population in that district is the same.
Yeah, but there's no way you'll ever be able to make sure it's even...
But the thing that I think you can...
What's going to happen is in a year's time, you'll have six new developments pop up and it's going to keep happening.
I think the thing that you can say is that based upon the number of homes, what is proposed is far more likely to be equal than what exists.
All right, are there any comments from the audience?
If it's continuous, why is the red always put up?
The red only represents, it's like this, if I can.
Is the red or the ones being affected?
Affected, that's fine.
And the elections office, I presume, will notify everybody who's being changed and their polling place and all that good stuff. Okay, I have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and approve.
Ordinance number?
Voting District Map, which appears on the council box.
Eight-eight-nine.
Ordinance eight-eight-nine.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay. Seven-zero, Mr. Lowery. Next item is resolution accepting streets, easements, and other stipulated public improvements in the Ironwood Estates Plan of Lots.
The public improvements, including roads, storm sewers, and stormwater management taken in the Ironwood Plan of Lots are ready for acceptance. The improvement's been expected by Gateway Engineers. Based upon that inspection report, Mr. Zomitas is recommending acceptance of the public improvements. As you will recall, this was tabled previously because we had a concern with regard to outstanding property taxes. That has been resolved, and it's my recommendation that council approve Resolution 2323, accepting streets, easements, and other stipulated public improvements in the Ironwood Plan of Lots.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay. Seven-zero, Mr. Lowery. Now, Mr. Lowery, put that slide back because we're going to be talking shortly about the conservation overlay. I want to point something out. When I was on the Planning Commission in 2014, this was the pilot plan that was sold to us that if we allowed smaller lots and smaller setbacks, that a bunch of trees in the plan would be saved. Now, I want you to look at that satellite map and show me how many trees are left in Ironwood.
Well, the only thing is, I don't disagree with your characterization of the plan, but I'm not sure this was developed under the CRO.
No, no, but we gave them, they asked for variances.
Yes.
On the left side and on the street and on the setbacks because they were going to save a bunch of trees.
Yeah, but this plan went through another builder, too.
I'm not saying anything about the current builder. I'm just saying that's...
Yeah. Because I know when I was up there, there were houses and I thought, man, this tree's like right there. And they were big. Now, looking at this, it doesn't look like they're there anymore. Now, whatever happened to them, I don't know, but...
So, you know, the developer went through bankruptcy. This was taken over by another builder who finished the...
Isn't this the one where there was an issue, too, with the runoff or something?
There was an issue with stormwater that the current developer took care of.
Hi, Monica Merrill, 105 Walnut Drive. I want to thank Mr. Cozer for reminding everybody that this was one of the first conservation overlay projects. I was very skeptical about it. I was assured it would be taken care of. I have the document from Mr. Zook, who explained to me that the top house on the cul-de-sac was going to replant 57 trees. I can give it to you, and I don't believe they're there. The other lady mentioned Frobe Road, where they cut down all the trees. My concern is that if we don't quickly move to stop issuing plans for the Conservation Overlay District, it's never going to be right. We're going to keep losing trees. We're going to keep having issues with erosion. And this is a perfect example that people aren't held to what they promise. So I would ask you, I know it's coming up on the docket for the public hearing, but I wanted to thank you for remembering that that was the way this was proposed in the very beginning. And I remember voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Merrill. Thanks for... All right, we'll move on to a new business. First is...
Yeah.
Next, first item of new business, approval for recorded purposes of the Tuscany II preliminary subdivision plan is shown on drawings prepared by Victor Wetzel dated December 21, 2022 for 339 Just About Land Company LLC.
So 339 Just About Land Company are the owners of 32.4 acres parcel of land located at 339 Just About Road, and they're seeking preliminary approval for a 37-lot residential development under the provisions of the Conservation Residential Overlay Zone. The proposed development would be located on 32.4 acres and has 37 lots. Tuscany II would have a density of 1.14 dwelling units per acre, which is well within the allowance in the Conservation Residential Overlay District. The proposed lots in the development range in size from .275 acres at the smallest to 1.25 acres at the largest. All but one of the lots exceed one-third of an acre in size. Lots 201, 202, and 203 have direct driveway access to Just About Road. That's a state road, and that will require approval of an HOP. One of the things that they will be doing in this plan is helping us address a problem we have at this intersection of Hill Place and Just About Road. In the plan as proposed, they will be adjusting that intersection so that, in fact, it is not at such an acute angle as it is right now. The other thing that they're going to be able to accomplish in this plan that kind of addresses a concern that we've had, we've been discussing elsewhere, there's a high tension line that moves through this plan. There's a tower in that plan. That tower will be located in the open space, so it will not impact the homes that are in the plan. We have a representative of the developers here. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and they're recommending approval. There are 18 conditions that were established by the Planning Commission. We're also suggesting the plan as designed utilizes these small roundabouts. Our experience with these small roundabouts is that they don't work from the standpoint, that people go over top of them. They don't have the impact that we like to see. And when we've had small areas like this, we end up paving over them. So rather than to do that, it's the recommendation of the staff that they be replaced with raised intersections.
Paul, I'm going to make a recommendation that we approve for, I'm going to make a motion that we approve for recorded purposes. The Tuscany II preliminary subdivision plan is shown on drawings by Victor Wetzel dated December 21, 2022 for 339 Just About Land Company LLC. Subject to the 18 conditions proposed by the Planning Commission, as well as the 19th condition that was a staff township staff recommendation, and that is that the traffic circles be replaced with raised intersections.
I'll second, but Mr. Simmons, I think, wants to speak.
Yes.
Yeah, Bob Simmons, 170 Simmons Road. I just have a couple comments. If I could walk over here, if I can show you. This cul-de-sac right here, this is my peach orchid. The design of this, this cul-de-sac is, for lack of a better word, jammed up against my farm. Okay, now, you do, you have the buffer zone in there that is required by the ordinance, good and appreciated. But of course, the cul-de-sac cuts through, there will be no buffer zone there. And I just also would be irresponsible for me not to point out that I'm going to lose at least two acres of farmable ground because those houses are being so tight against it. Because the Department of Agriculture has 100-foot, for some of my normal farming operations, they require that I stay back 100 feet from, of course, any occupied building or anything like that. And these houses, the way this, these houses are obviously going to be facing the road, so the side of the house is going to be, probably going to be within 25, 30 feet of my farm, my orchid. Well, the only thing that I'm going to be able to do is, I guess I have to move back. I've been there for 60 years, but I'm not going to be able to farm, draw 100-foot, you know, from out here, that I'm not going to be able to find. I figure I'm going to leave, I'm going to have to take out probably 80 to 100 feet trees somewhere in there. And I'm just, I want to point out to you, I'm just as angry at my Department of Agriculture as I am at you, because they will not give me a straight answer. I have contacted them, discussed with them that you have a buffer zone. They will not give me a straight answer whether I can farm up to that or not. So, you know, I am frustrated with them also. But I want to point out to you that that is the case. I am going to lose, there's no question. The way this is designed, I'm going to lose some farming. I do not understand, I don't want the developer to lose any lots, but I do not understand why most, all cul-de-sacs I have all over come up to my farm everywhere. And they're mostly designed like this, you know, the houses go all the way around, they go all the way around the cul-de-sac. I don't understand why that cul-de-sac just could be back here a little bit and the houses go all the way around. Now, staff pointed out to me that you have these problems with future development. You know, later on, you know, you get, people get mad because, well, just pave in the road stuff, you know what I mean? So that it's there, you know, people are going to see that it's there. There's going to be no question, it's there, you know? I think the problem you come in with is when it's not there and then you come in and put it in. But I don't understand why that has to be stubbed up against so tight. And on the buffer zone, this is Tuscany II. Tuscany I, never got the buffer zone. I never bought them. They were never put in, you know, they're just not there. There's a few trees. I drove up again today, and there's a few trees planted. But the buffer zones don't happen, and I don't know why I would think it's going to happen because if you're approving a plan where the first part of this plan never got the agriculture buffer. I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Paul, is there a reason why we have to have that cul-de-sac in there? Because it looks like from those lots, both of those lots, the one up above and the one below, it looks like they're just going to access on the street and not the cul-de-sac.
Well, it's a temporary cul-de-sac.
It's a temporary cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I don't understand why we didn't, why can't we...
Well, this is a preliminary plan. This isn't a final plan. I mean, you could pull the cul-de-sac back, but what you'd want to do then is stub the road out. So, you know, as you well know, we're into this all the time about extending the plans. And there will be at some point in the future that, I realize you want to farm forever, but there will be at some point in the future that Mr. Simmons may change his mind. And I don't think you'd want to create an impediment that stops him from being able to develop his property.
I want to get to the other side of it.
And if you want, you have, can you come up to the microphone?
Well, I guess even if it was a permanent cul-de-sac, Mr. Simmons, you said it's 100 feet, right?
100 feet, yes.
Okay, so even if it's a permanent cul-de-sac, the rear yard setbacks, what, 40 feet, right?
But you wouldn't want to do a permanent cul-de-sac there surrounding it by homes.
He still, unfortunately, would be within the buffer.
Mike Wetzel with Victor Wetzel Associates. And as kind of shown on the plan, as staff always goes through, they would like to have interconnection between other properties.
I understand.
So, and to tell you the truth, most developers would love just to have that one cul-de-sac that is moved back and you just surround it all the way around. But when you do that, you don't have then the interconnectability that takes place in the future, five years, 10 years, 50 years from now. You have then that right-of-way that leads all the way to the property line, that that cul-de-sac would be then removed and a road extended, you know, at some other point. Once again, it could be 50 years from now.
But you could do what Mr. Simmons has suggested. You could pull back the temporary cul-de-sac, stub the road out. And I'm not sure what that gets you, except for the fact that cars won't be turning around.
It doesn't get you anything.
I'm more concerned about him losing those trees.
Yeah, it just seems like we could...
Yeah, we get the house a little away from the property line.
Right.
No matter what, because if we would move that cul-de-sac back, back along into here, what happens is that lot still needs to get access to that road right-of-way through here. That's the public road right-of-way. So do you only build a private drive for a certain amount of time? That lot is there designed based on the requirements of the township to provide interconnectability between land, adjacent lands.
Seth, in Tuscany I, is there any temporary cul-de-sac that would eventually connect into the Simmons property?
The top end of Tuscany I does have a temporary cul-de-sac. And the Victor Lane Street that they're tying into there in the center of the plan was a temporary stub street developed as part of Tuscany I to facilitate the development of this property, which they are taking advantage of to improve the interconnection between the developments. You know, as is consistent with all of our plan reviews and examinations, if they were to do, you know, not even, if they were to do a permanent cul-de-sac there off to the west, it could only be 600 feet in length. But because it's designed as a temporary cul-de-sac, right-of-ways are laid out and such, they're able to utilize a longer temporary cul-de-sac. This plan meets all of our buffer requirements. It meets all of our setback requirements. It meets all of our open space requirements. And I've had conversations with Mr. Simmons. And, you know, I understand where he's coming from, but, you know, there's nothing within the Township zoning regulations or the subdivision and land development ordinance that would preclude this cul-de-sac from being located where it is or these lots being located where they is, where they are, you know, assuming they're compliant with all those regulations.
What do you know about this Department of Agriculture plan, this 100-foot buffer?
Mr. Simmons has shared that with me in conversation. And to the best of my knowledge, it applies to the, it depends on the type of application of herbicides and pesticides. And that dictates this no pesticide application buffer. I think the 100-foot is the most extreme, but I could be wrong on that. But in this particular situation, the nearest you would have a house to those peach trees on Mr. Simmons' property would be 32 and 1/2 feet. You have 25 feet of open space between the edge of the development and the lot lines and then an extra 7 and 1/2 side yard setback. So that leaves you 67 and 1/2 feet on the other side of the property line where that no application zone would exist.
And just one correction to what he said there. It is not, it is not just the spreading. Absolutely, you know, they made sure fertilizer's spreading, dust, noise, all the, it's not just pesticide.
So you essentially can't do anything with that buffer zone?
Absolutely not.
You can't even pick the peaches, is what you're saying?
That is correct. Well, there won't be any peaches.
Well, right, I understand.
There's not going to be any peaches if I can't take care of my...
What's the length of that cul-de-sac, Seth? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It looks about 1,200 feet or so.
So if you made it a permanent dead end, it wouldn't comply with the ordinance anyway?
No, that's correct.
The edge of that...
1,000 feet.
The plan is still going to be within the buffer zone.
It's 1,000 feet.
Right, but if you made it a permanent cul-de-sac and you put lots at the end, at least the house in theory would be further away from the buffer zone than the cul-de-sac is.
Yes, that's...
And once again, a lot of cases, we'd rather move that cul-de-sac back, but it's really, I'll say, proper planning to be able to have that extension of right-of-ways for the future.
What's the nature to paving the stuff? To pave, you know, what's the nature to that?
Well, but that's not going to get you what you want. But what you're really asking the developer to do is to lose two lots.
I don't think so.
Let me ask you, the open space area right along Just About there, is that conducive to building? And where I'm going with that is, can we shift the open space from that area, give you two lots there, up to give more of a buffer to Mr. Simmons at the cul-de-sac?
You need to get that power line.
You have the power line that goes through.
There's the power line.
Okay, okay, I forgot about that.
And once again, we're not utilizing the 75-foot minimum into there. I take a look, lots, lot 221 is about 160 feet wide and 210 is about 113 feet wide. So once again, we're not utilizing small lots over along and through there. But that's the nature of where we are in relationship of interconnection between... feet wide. So once again, we're not utilizing small lots over along and through there. But that's the, the nature of where we are in relationship of interconnection between uh, land uses or future developments.
I have a question about Mr. Simmons' comment about Tuscany 1 not having any open space or buffer zone. Why was that?
I, I, I'm on that.
The agricultural buffer implemented in Tuscany 1 was done essentially on a per-lot basis during the construction of those homes, and that was a bit of a learning experience for us. Going into Tuscany 2, this buffer along the farm property is going to be considered part of the open space and therefore a public improvement. We're going to bond those buffers. So if they're not put in by the developer, we could call a bond and install those public improvements, or if they want that bond money released, they would need to make sure that those buffers are completely installed, um, consistent with the landscape plan as part of the construction drawings.
But you can't, but you can't ask them to do Tuscany 1 before it?
Tuscany 1 is, we, we cannot conflate the two and tie Tuscany 1 to Tuscany 2.
Are you going to hold Tuscany 1 to?
Tuscany 2, Tuscany 1 is an ongoing situation. We're working on getting those buffers installed.
Yeah, condition 18 says that the plantings in the buffer shall be considered public improvements and bonded, and, and shall be planted prior to the acceptance of the public improvements.
And then what happens when, you know, once we accept the public improvements and the trees die, then it becomes our problem? Or whose problem, whose problem does it become?
We have a maintenance bond that we do with all acceptance of public improvements. We'd have to review if that can be considered part of those maintenance bonds. Um, we also have regulations in the zoning ordinance in Saldo that landscaping in open space, I think, two planting seasons, they're supposed to be replaced if they die, um, but any longer than that.
Right, after that.
Case by case basis, we have to.
So if the developer's gone, you know, what do you do then? Put it on the HOA, and if the HOA doesn't do it, then you've got no buffer, right? Mr. Simmons, I feel terrible for you. I really do. The problem we face here is you've got a plan that complies with every, you know, complies with every ordinance that we have.
I'd like to see us work on a challenge to afford the clearance to the orchard, to the lot 211, and, and, you know, challenge them to come back with a configuration that doesn't impose the hardship.
Is it, do you, I mean, and I'm embarrassed, I'll admit, Mr. Simmons, that I, I never knew about this, this buffer zone issue you're dealing with.
We do it while I'm sitting here, but.
But is there any mechanism? No, I didn't know you, that you had to be 100, that you couldn't farm with an 100-foot.
Did you receive the letter that I gave to them to give to you?
I, I don't know, Bob, I, I don't know, I know that you and I have talked, I know you have talked to Seth, but I don't remember.
I have any lives, I didn't even know.
Yeah, you do, you do, Bob, you do, Bob, there was a letter.
And you, and you said you gave it to them.
Oh, okay, it was in, Seth had just, it apparently was in the docket last time Tuscany 2 was, was in, was up.
I think Mr. Simmons, I looked at it, was looking to see if you had any rights from the federal government that you were there first, such that we couldn't allow that. But I, I didn't see that, but it's been a while since I've looked at that.
Do you, do you have any mechanism that you can appeal?
Get an exemption?
Like if the Department of Agriculture, if they, if they tell you that you, you know, can't work within the, is there any sort of administrative process that you can go through? I'm, I'm just asking, because I'm curious.
I did not ask them that question.
Because certainly we would.
I'm really doubted, because I'm, I'm telling you, they're, they're just, they're just trying, the, the fact that they won't give me an answer is that they're just trying to protect themselves, and they don't want to say, yeah, you can farm up there.
Are you trying to say that a government agency hasn't given you a straight answer?
You imagine.
Paul, so when Orchard Hills went in, a lot of the open space was dedicated to continued farming. Clearly, that wasn't going to be outside of the 100-foot buffer. How was that?
Yeah, how did we do that?
I couldn't answer that question. I don't know that. But, and that, some of that is still.
No, I think I have the answer to that. This only, this 100-foot thing only came, I forget the date, pretty recent.
And I think Trac still, still utilizes those orchards.
That's my understanding, yeah, they do.
Because certainly if there's an administrative process you can go through, certainly we would support you, because, I mean, you know, you were there first, and it makes no sense to me that the developer can come in and just bump you out then.
Do we need to put table this?
That's my point.
We have a motion on the table.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my motion for approval. Okay, do I have another motion?
I'll make a, a motion at table this discussion until we can get some further reconfiguration.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Uh, Mr. Simmons, in the interim, if you can look into whether or not you have any administrative appeal rights, we'd appreciate that. Next item is change order number one to a contract with Mealy and Mealy Sons, Inc. for the 2022 Peters Township Road Paving Program.
Peters Township, like most municipalities, utilizes funds received from the state under the municipal liquid fuels program to fund a significant portion of its annual street resourcing program. A requirement of that program is that the municipal program adheres to the standards in PenDOT publication 408, which includes a provision, uh, to pay paving contractors an asphalt price adjustment. In 2022, the price of liquid asphalt increased significantly during the course of the contract, so an adjustment was triggered. Included in the document is change order one prepared by the Peters Township Engineering Department in the amount of $77,829.37. It's been reviewed and agreed to by Mealy and Mealy, who was the contractor in the job, and it's my recommendation that council approve change order one.
You got a motion in a second, any discussion? Paul, you good? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next is change order number five to the contract with A. Liberooni for the Rolling Hills Park Phase Project 1.
Although the, the change order involves a number of items, the, the fact of the matter is, if you look at it, the bulk of the items are related to, first, the liquid asphalt index adjustment, and again, you're, you're facing the same thing, that the liquid, um, asphalt, uh, index price rose substantially between when this project was, was bid and when the project was finished. The other thing was that, um, uh, the storm basin number one, it's the basin you can see from East McMurray Road, uh, was designed to be an infiltration basis, and when it was constructed, um, uh, it was constructed in accordance with the plan, um, but what was, what occurred is that the, the basin could not fulfill this performance requirement, and, uh, we were directed by the Washington County Conservation District to make modifications to, to the dam to allow it to accept, um, uh, water and it not stand. So between those two items, you're looking at, um, $73,600. The total value of the change order is $79,000, or roughly 1.1% of the contract. For the entire contract, change orders, um, equal $303,525, or 4.4% of the original contract value, and both Mr. Zomitas and I think that that's well within, uh, what was it, uh, what should be considered acceptable. The other thing that I'll point out to you, this, this contractor, when he bid this project, was, I'm sorry? Was $1.5 million lower than the second contract, so even with these change orders, you're way ahead of where you would have been.
So when that, when that infiltration, uh, or, what is it, a basin?
It's a basin.
When that was designed, I'm assuming they did infiltration testing prior, what did that indicate?
Well, um, you know, they did the design based off of one, they had took one bore in there, and you know how these things go, and it says it'll infiltrate, but for whatever reason, you know, there's a soil mixture that goes in, in the bottom of the basin, you know, peat moss and sand and stuff, and, and that was put in, and there was underdrain in that, but for whatever reason, it, it doesn't infiltrate, and the Conservation District didn't allow the standing water, so we had to go back, muck out all the soil mixture, put in extra underdrains, and basically leave that soil mixture out of the basin for now, so.
So you're not concerned with the engineer missing anything, then, on that?
Um, no, I mean, they, they did, it was standard operating procedure, the way they designed it, it just didn't function as intended. So at some point in time, we're going to have to revisit that before our permit expires, which is like another 18 months, and, and either do some type of retrofit or reach some type of agreement with the Conservation District about a redesign there, because it obviously is not going to infiltrate where, where it is.
Mark, is this then the final change order with Liberooni?
This is, this will close out the contract. This is basically the only outstanding item. I'm still waiting for a maintenance bond, but that's in the works, so this is kind of final.
Does the change order reflect the fact that this closes that account?
It does. It does.
That's my engineer saying that, is my attorney saying that?
Haven't seen it. Have you seen it?
Here, it's right here, you can look that up.
If that's the case, I'm in favor of, uh, getting this contract behind us.
I mean, it's relatively shorted, and it is listed as final as well.
Is that a provisional ball on your part?
This, this is their final payment, right?
Yeah, we haven't issued final payment yet, because we want to, you know, this has to be approved first, and then we'll go with the final, final pay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change order number five to the A. Liberooni contract for the Rolling Hills Park Phase 1 project in the amount of $79,762.2.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer.
I am an aye with the premise that this becomes a final change order amount.
Next item, award of contract for custodial services.
So, um, our custodial contract, um, ends on April 1st. We went out to, uh, accept bids for custodial service. Five firms expressed interest in bidding the project. Um, uh, when bids were actually received, only Environmental Control actually submitted a bid. Um, one of the things that we found that you might well expect in, in speaking to the various contractors, they're having a difficult time filling these positions, and so it, it did come to us as, as a surprise that there would be an increase in the cost. Uh, we were a little taken back by that the increase was as large as it was. We're moving from $113,000 to $201,000. I will say this, in the last year, year and a half, the service that we've been receiving from our current vendor hasn't been what we would want it to be, and I think in part that's a reflection of their inability to staff the contract the way it needs to be done. Um, one other thing Mr. Durofsky had an opportunity to do was to check the references of environmental control. Um, in each of those cases, um, all three, um, public entities indicated that the service they've been receiving over time has been good. It's my recommendation that council award a two-year contract environmental control.
What do you guys budgeting for this?
What's that?
What was the budget for this?
Would have been reflected in the current year's contract. I mean, slightly more than that, just given some cleaning, so you're probably looking at something in the neighborhood of 130 to 140 total. I mean, we expected an increase in this cost when we did the budget last year.
What's our recourse if they can't maintain?
We rebid.
You rebid, you also, the contract has provisions to cancel.
Yeah.
If in fact you don't perform.
Yeah, there's a 60-day notice, they have a cure period of five days. If not, the, then we just proceed with liquidating the contract.
Does it have, did we bid it as a two-year contract?
We, yeah. We initially bid it as a three-year contract, and the contractors that attended the pre-bid meeting did not feel confident bidding that long a contract with the labor market the way it is, so we reduced it to two.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next is award of a professional services contract for the design of a traffic signal.
So, as you will recall, in 2022, the township, um, uh, employed the services of traffic planning to design, uh, our traffic engineer to complete a traffic signal asset management plan, the purpose of which was to develop a plan, uh, of, of developing the plan was to create a comprehensive inventory of equipment, develop a, a process for inspection of signals, and to create a schedule for systematic replacing and upgrading equipment. And what, what came out of that plan is, um, a plan to, once every two years, replace the signals, uh, that the township owns. Um, in, uh, 2023, the budget included an appropriation of $40,000 to design permit and administer the replacement of the traffic signal at Gallery Drive. In the five-year capital improvement program, there's a placeholder in 2024 of $4,000, $400,000 to remove and replace that existing signal. The proposal from traffic planning to design, uh, to do this work is $36,900. So we would like to go ahead with this. Our intention is, as we're developing the design, is to attempt to identify whether there are grant opportunities to assist the township in, uh, doing these traffic signal improvements, but you have traffic signals that have been out there for a considerable period of time, and at some point in time, you know, all of those poles need to be replaced.
I made a comment at the last meeting that I thought we had a pole that failed, and you corrected me based on the fact that it was part of a collision.
Yes.
I also recall that we lost a traffic, uh, light that fell on a vehicle in the past decade anyway, so there's reasons to be concerned that we need to go forward with a plan like this.
Oh, and, and, and I don't know whether it's in District 12, but the PenDOT is very excited about what's happening with traffic signal maintenance, because they've actually had signal poles collapse on the cars, and so, um, they're very anxious to have municipalities.
Trying to figure out which.
And again, if you think about this, if we're doing this every two years, uh, we'll get to the last signal in 30 years, not.
Well, we're not going to do every signal every two years. There's six signals on the Route 19 corridor that are particularly old, as you can remember through the history of the township, that, that corridor developed first, so Galleries circa 1988, Moccasin, uh, Circle Drive, you know, they're all 1980s, early 90s signals. They've never had a wholesale replacement, so they're, they're the original mast arms, foundations, bolts, and everything out there, so we think a plan like this to, to do those oldest signals first is, is smart. Just design one one year, replace, design, replace, design, replace, for 12 years until we get to six oldest signals on Route 19 down there.
I'll make a motion to, uh, award a professional services contract, traffic planning, design, and design permitting and contract administration for the replacement of traffic signal signals located in intersection Route 19 and Gallery Drive.
Wait, I have a question. Um, a couple months ago, possibly, maybe six months, I don't know, the conversation came up about, um, the traffic, um, lights in Upper St. Clair, and I don't know, the, the topic came up about.
Oh, as soon as you get done with this motion, we're going to have that discussion, because. It's leftover from our workshop.
Yeah, we had a virtual Monday, last Monday.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, I forgot that, but yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer.
Ms. Shenef, I think this is what you're referring to. This is a standard traffic signal in Peters Township. Um, we asked traffic, um, uh, planning, design to give us information on decorative poles, and so what they came back with in their report, and that report's in your docket, um, is that there's really two approaches that you could take. One is the approach that was taken in Moon Township, where they took standard poles and they, they had them painted, and, you know, that, that painting process is designed to last for many years. The incremental cost on a normal intersection to do that is $97,400. Now, what, what St. Clair has done, and you see this in other parts of the city, uh, Murraysville has these kind of poles. I, I think, as you approach in Oakland right now, they have these kind of poles, are, are these fluted poles, um, and the incremental, and they're, and they're painted, but the incremental cost of those kind of, uh, decorative poles per intersection is $135,800. So what we know is that if we decide on one of these other approaches, even if we were to attract grant money, that, that grant money will not be used for decorative poles. That, that incremental cost will fall back on the township. The reason why I think having this discussion now makes sense is in 2024 or 2025, the intersection at Thompsonville, um, East McMurray and Beemaw is going to be done, and that would be a chance to implement decorative poles. In addition to that, our intention is the next year, do the first of the signals on Route 19, and again, if you are going to do this, and there's going to be, um, a systematic replacement of those, those intersections, it would be the opportunity to do this. But the question to council is, is this incremental cost something, uh, that you're interested in, in funding?
I think it was split. So Allison, you were the.
Actually.
I don't think it was.
Well, that's exactly what happened. It was a 3-3 split.
Well, let's not put Ms. Shenneford. I mean, you're giving her this. So let her have some time to think about it before we make that decision. We don't need to make this decision.
You don't have to make it tonight, but you have to make it before the project is adopted.
You know, during the workshop, I was opposed to getting the fancy ones because that's, I mean, come on. But somebody brought up a discussion about the ones, the one at this intersection here in the town center. Because we have those street lights that we hang, the Christmas stuff on. They're decorative. And I could see doing that one decorative, you know, I can see paying maybe more for that to keep that consistent. But to spend these incremental amounts, in my opinion, is just a waste of money.
And again, we don't need to decide this tonight.
No, I know that. I'm just going on record right now. That's my position.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I should have corrected this earlier. The award for the custodial services contract, there was not a motion in a second before that?
Somebody moved.
No, I didn't think so, but.
Oh, that's.
I'll move. I'll move it.
All right, we'll revoke. We got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Seven zero.
Who seconded that?
Prescott.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was looking ahead to the next item.
I'm sure.
My apologies. Now we go to set a date for a public hearing for an ordinance demanding in Peters Township. Code of Ordinance is Chapter 440, zoning section 400, district classification.
So, and in fact, all you are doing is setting a date for a public hearing. But having said that, the intention is that this be adopted as a pending ordinance so that it in fact becomes controlling until such time as action is actually taken on the ordinance. So as council's aware, at the workshop that was held last Monday, council expressed an opinion that what they would like to see is that the zoning map be amended so as to remove overlay zones that are under the Conservation Residential District unless there is a plan under construction or an approved application. So what this map shows is everywhere where CRs have either been under construction or there is a application that has been accepted by the township. What would happen if you in fact were to adopt the ordinance and what happens in the interim is that all properties that aren't developed will be removed from the CR zone. And they cannot be developed in that fashion until such time as council decides whether or not it wants to take action on the ordinance. I think, and I'll ask the solicitor, is that if in fact, after getting comments from the planning commission, and if in fact, after having the public hearing, if you do not substantially change the number of properties that are either in or out of the district, you could amend the pending ordinance to do that. What you can't do is make substantial changes to the pending ordinance because if you do that, then we need to start the process all over again. I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to explain what's involved in the pending ordinance.
So the pending ordinance, as Paul alluded to, is it the idea that if we were to do a normal ordinance process, that all the applicants could run in and try to take shelter under the current law? And so to negate that, a couple of things have to happen. One, we do not have any applications right now that we're trying to, you know, stop that are in the pipeline. In fact, the manager has set forth that anything that's already in place is staying in place. So that's number one. Number two is, again, just the idea that the board, when you vote on this, votes and wants to seek shelter under pending ordinance. Seeks that relief such that when we advertise for the public hearing, and I told the manager we should also simultaneously advertise for adoption of the ordinance that same night to accept we can do it after the hearing, then nobody can come in and take, make an application. They will be subject to the ordinance that's pending, not that's been adopted. Now, there is a body of law out there. The question, what would happen if you've never adopted it? At some point, it goes away. What the manager also pointed out was, because you're seeking shelter under pending, you have to stay within the bounds so much of the actual ordinance that's being advertised and being made available here for review. If we change it substantially, and there's, again, some difference in opinion in case law as to what that means, as to whether we have to go through the process again, arguably, we could lose that pending status. So if somebody does try to make application in the interim and we change it, we may, they may jump back ahead of us to take shelter under the current ordinance that we're about to change. If that makes sense. So there has to be some declaration. The board wants this to be have pending status. Typically, we do that just by discussing it and making sure that you understand when you vote that we're not doing anything different other than making the public aware that it will be pending once we advertise it.
Couldn't we just take the position that we're going to get rid of it? And then that would be the public hearing. And then when that's done, then we can start and draft a new ordinance.
Essentially, you are. I believe that's what we're doing.
Oh, I think that's in effect what you're doing. You're removing, you're removing any parcel that could be possibly under consideration for development under the CR overlay. You're removing that. And.
Yeah, it just goes away. We're not, until you want to bring it back.
So if in fact, this gets, this ordinance gets adopted and council wants to go back and revisit this in terms of including parcels, you can do that. What we believe is, and I'm going to give Mr. Zomitis credit for this good idea. You know, the fact of the matter is, this is a year that we're planning on doing the comprehensive plan. And if we're removing these parcels and saying that we want to give consideration for these types of developments under a set of criteria, I think the comprehensive planning process is the best place to establish those criteria and apply them and bring these parcels back, if in fact, that's what you want to do. So the comprehensive plan could look at which parcels are in. Those suggestions that the planning department has made with regard to changes to dimensional requirements could be also looked at as part of the comprehensive planning process. I think it's a much more thorough way to bring these back, if that's what we intend to do.
My recollection was that there were certain parcels that could only be developed under this overlay. Was I wrong?
Oh, I, you know, I, again, I believe that these parcels down in this far corner, given the terrain off the McClellan Road, I don't know how you're going to develop those eventually. You need some type of ability to do something a bit different than great half-acre lots down there.
All right. Well, I see the audience is full of landowners and developers, so I presume some members of the audience are going to want to speak. So Mr. McGlocklin, you want to kick us out?
Couple of things I want to point out tonight's meeting. I think when we look at this, we look at that Ironwood development as a very bad example of anything other than, period. It's a bad example. Don't need to go into the problems that were in there, but it's unfortunate for all involved. But I think some nice homes in there now. Another thing is the number of trees. You know, we've fought this for years, number of trees. We have people in here tonight telling us to cut trees down, people in here telling us to plant trees. If you look historically and look it up, there are more trees in North America now than there were 60 years ago. So, and Peters falls right into that. When I grew up, every farmer farmed from fence post to fence post. There weren't any trees. So we have plenty of trees. The other thing I look at with this overlay district is, I think there's a vocal minority that's been pushing this. You know, I hear Mr. Mills, when he was at that workshop, he talked about his constituents. And I wanted to hear how many actual constituents. Were there three? Were there 30? Were there 300? What was the exact number? I know when we did the last comprehensive plan, it was a timely, time-consuming thing. It went on for quite a while, many years before they could change the zoning to accommodate it. And it moved in the right direction. I think the issues we've discovered with growing pains, and I think we always hear that word in here, you know, what we're kind of learning as we go, and we do, is very simple. Houses need to be back further from the street and there needs to be more distance between the houses on the side yards. That's easily changed without throwing away all the money we spent on a consultant when we did the last study, which, Paul, do you remember what that was close to in the top of your head? At least $130,000?
Oh, it's at least that, yes.
Okay. We're ignoring him, we're ignoring them, all the work that went into that. And as I talk to staff, I mean, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I initially thought, Seth, you thought just tweaking the ordinance would work to get what we wanted. I think Paul thought the same thing.
Well, what, but what the staff thought was that there were parcels that should be removed based upon where they're located in a set of criteria.
Once you take it away, it's probably never coming back.
Well, and the other thing that I was going to say before my phone interrupted was that there were also dimensional requirements on the lots we think need to be changed. And, you know, one of the things is that what did occur, because council made this change, is that the houses are actually, that are currently approved under this are actually further back than the initial ones.
I, you know, and I hear everybody saying, they use particular plans as an example. They say, you know, Juniper Woods, we don't look like that. Well, obviously, Juniper Woods was very successful. I don't think we've ever had a plan sell out as fast. So I think it shows there's a demand for that housing. And, you know, Mr. Austin, the other night gave at the workshop, perfect example on what a half-acre lot's going to cost in Peters, which means a new home in Peters, instead of being 700 that it is now, we hope, is going to be minimum of 1.3. And we heard people tonight saying affordable housing. So there's a happy medium there somewhere. Everybody wants to point their finger at builders and developers, but we work within the rules and try to help establish those rules. I think the tweaks that the township talked about would work. And I hate to see it go away because there are parcels that it's needed. You know, and Rizzuto's property is a prime example where it has all those right-of-ways, gas, water, all those. Without that, how would he develop that? You know, how would he develop it? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you for your patience, gentlemen.
Seth Taylor, Doubletree Drive of Venetia. There's no such thing as affordable housing in Peters Township. If you bought a house, I built houses for $16,500, 65 years ago. Now they're $300,000, same house. You go to Quill Run, you might get something for $250,000. These plans that have been presented recently to the township, Resito, Bruny, Frobe, Taylor, Eddie Holmes, I think has two. I drove through those plans today and the complaint that I had heard was the traffic. Well, once the houses are built, the traffic doesn't seem to be a problem. My solution to that would be to put three parking spaces at every house, make the lots a little bit bigger, the side yards bigger, the setback bigger. And I think you still have the option of fee in lieu of, instead of open space, put the open space part of a lot, be off the tax, it'll be on the tax records, now the open space is not being taxed. If you made the lot bigger by using the example, I have 24 acres, that means six acres of open space. So if I have 24 lots or 30 lots, divide that by that amount, and you get like 8,000 more square feet to a lot. And you have more width, more depth, more frontage. Use 24 feet for the street right of way, which is half-acre lots now. And the people have no trouble getting up and down the streets. If you have a Christmas party and you have 30 cards, it's not a problem. I've done that. That's my solution to what needs to be done with this plan to make it more. You got it in Nottingham, you got it in Union, you got it in South Park, you got it, North Starane probably has five plans like that. Cecil has Traditional America, which is perfectly level ground. And they probably have 300 houses all there right now. They're going all the way over to South Point. And that's what's selling. It's, you know, I built 300,000 square foot, or 3,000 square foot house, $200 square foot, that's 600 plus the lot. I got $180,000 in a lot for a small lot. And it's not getting any better. I just bought another piece of ground adjoining where I am on Thomas Road right now. And it'll probably be 220,000 for a lot. So everything that's being built in Peters is a million dollars. And that sure eliminates a lot of people. The people that might be complaining about these smaller lots, they might live in a house that's 50 years old, but that's not, we can't do that anymore. It's inflation and young people can't come to Peters Township anymore, or were born here, they can't afford to stay here unless their parents have money. And I, you can go, take the whole class this year graduating, I have grandkids that age. And if I don't help them, they're going to be in trouble. They'll be gone. And they'll never be back. And family means a lot to me and probably most everyone on this board feels the same way about families. And if you take this map here that you're showing, now the farmer, more than one farmer, eventually that ground's going to be sold. And if that's not included in there, they're going to lose money by doing away with this overlay district. I'd much rather build half-acre lots, but who can afford the houses anymore? You got Mark Hoskins, one plan that was submitted tonight, and that's, there'll be $2 million houses. So you have to be careful what you're planting if you're trying to do away with that overlay district because it's not going to work for the whole township. And there was 37 lots built, 37 houses built last year in Peters Township. You cannot survive with 37 houses built. We always had at least 100 houses being built. And that's, that's, you know, we have 15367, the second richest zip code in Pennsylvania. And that's what's carrying the township. But that can't continue because people keep moving out. As soon as their kids get out of high school, they're gone. They move out of Peters Township. They might go to North Starane, they might go to Cecil. But that's, this is a problem that's not going away unless you consider keeping this, but consider my options of how you could make it better by making the little bigger lots. Because what we have now for open space is garbage. From McMurray Road up past Snyder's Gas Station, all the way down to Turkeyfoot Road, I gave seven and a half acres to Peters Township 20 years ago. I maintained it for 15 years. It hasn't been maintained for the last 10 years. It's grown up and it's an eyesore. That was, yeah, one and a half acres more than I had to give, but I didn't want to build on Thomas Road, so I gave it, or on Beeby Road, so I gave an extra one and a half acre. No, I wish I had it back, but it's not being used. All through my plan, all the open spaces, Bethel, I don't think has open space. I don't know about North Starane. You might know about North Starane. You can make better use of the open space by giving it to the lot owners than just taking it off the tax record. Those are my comments and you can respond or say go to hell, but here I am. I've been here 65 years and I'll be here till it falls.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
You mean Mike Wetzel, Victor Wetzel Associates again. And once again, we agree that I think the design intent that was done for the conservation overlay really hasn't been met from when it was done years ago. But what was kind of presented a couple of times here tonight is, I think there's some tweaks that have, need to be done in regard to the conservation overlay and maybe look at some of the parcels that are located into the township. You know, certain developments have kind of taken advantage of the way that was, the way the ordinance was written. Some plans are, use it to maybe reduce the front yard setback. Some plans are, use it to maybe reduce the front yard setback, but still have larger lots. You take in our regard some of the topographic reasons within the site. So I think that's what needs to be done, is to have some tweaks that might take place in regard to the requirements of the conservation overlay. Look at the parcels that are available within the project, and really maybe have some workshops where you have landowners, developers, you know, professionals working with staff, planning commission, council, to see really what goes back to what was the original design intent of the conservation overlay. So, thank you, sir. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience?
Yeah, my, it's Paul Watson, when he talks about development and everything. They just sold that church, that Peters Creek Church. It was up for sale, they didn't even post it, they took the sign down, did everything.
I can tell you, it wasn't sold for development, sir.
They're not?
No. There's been rumors in the township, but I can tell you that because I'm representing the buyer, and the buyer's not a developer.
They took all that, okay. I heard it was a buyer, and they're going to develop it, and that's it.
Still going to be a church.
That's what it is.
Okay. Church, same old church.
There you go. It won't be a bank, it'll be a church. There you go.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa McLaughlin, I live at 951 Cagney Drive. If you need to know that, or if you need me to sign in, I'll sign in. My first time up here, so. I just wanted to make a comment. I was a member of the steering committee for the comprehensive land use plan that is currently in effect, and I think it just needs to be noted that me, myself and a couple of other members, well, I think it was like eight of us total, worked really hard for a year along with council and the planning department and township staff to try to, you know, to implement these, that come up with a good overlay district, to come up with effective and something that's productive and that, something that was actually talked about. We had meetings with, you know, we had really good, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. So, I'm sorry, I don't do public speaking, sorry, I apologize. But the bottom line is, we had a lot of meetings during that time. We had focus groups with real estate agents, with developers, with business owners. I mean, we didn't just, it wasn't something that was just taken lightly by any means. And we spent a lot of money on this plan, and it's not, there isn't a one size fits all. There isn't going to be something that's going to work for everyone. We know that. But we did have residents come in, you know, we invited the public, we had several public meetings, and just a handful of people, you know, would come at a time, and we would send out massive emails, massive mailers, you know, so I just want to make that, I just wanted to make a comment that there was a lot of time that went into it and a lot of money.
And the reason why the comprehensive plan is going to be looked at again is that in the state of Pennsylvania, the recommendation is that every 10 years that the comprehensive plan be looked at, and it's hard to believe, but it was 10 years ago that we actually worked on that.
I know, I feel pretty old. But, and I don't know if maybe back then, a lot of things were negated, because that's what I feel like we're doing right now, you know, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. I'm Kim Claxton, I've been in the township for 38 years now. When the overlay districts came in originally, we were, we were asked to comment on that, and we did. It gave flexibility to development. We need that flexibility because of different economic groups that come to Peters Township, so we get larger and smaller lots, and so we can get a good cross-section into the township. I drove down to Froby, and I'm very disappointed in what happened there. So, yeah, I don't want to see that again, if we can. We'd like to keep the integrity of the township, to see what we've got here. It's a, it's a great place to live, and I'd like to see it get better. So I'd like you to see, you keep the overlay, and let's tighten it up, make it, make it work better for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claxton. Anybody else from the audience?
Hello again, Monica Merrill. Mrs. McLaughlin's right, we did do this 10 years ago, and there was a lot of people. I'm not sure why she thought the residents weren't engaged, but they were. And they were, there were meetings in every different part of the township. So I think people did have input, and people listened to what we said we were going to do. And one of the things we said we were going to do among the rest of the tenants of comprehensive plan was to try to make more affordable, not affordable, let me take that word out, more diverse housing for young people, for seniors. And the conservation overlay was to help that. And I'm not saying conservation overlay is a bad thing, I'm saying it did not result in the intent for which we agreed to pursue. I would recommend that you eliminate it now, go ahead and rethink whether you want to use it again, but exactly the reason that we're talking about, young people can't stay, older people can't stay. All of the thing, all the plans that have been developed are for families, even just about farms, when it first came in was supposed to be patio homes. I think there might be two. The rest of them are all two-story huge homes. Again, 700,000, 900,000, you know, we may never get to a $300,000 house in Peters again, but the point being, when we made that decision, it was with the intent to achieve a certain result, and then we haven't. So stop right now, step back, please, and think about it. And if you have to move the public hearing up earlier than June, please do. Just stop until we can talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Merrill.
I don't think there's anybody on this council who was on when the overlay district was adopted who's happy with what it is.
Happy, all right. I was there.
I mean, that's, that's a foregone conclusion. And obviously, I mean, I was in supportive and I'll acknowledge that because you're exactly right, Mrs. Merrill, because, you know, when I first ran for council, one of my bullet points was that I wanted to see the elderly population of this township be able to stay here, because I'd had too many friends whose parents had to move out of the township because they were priced up. The idea was, you know, you pay off your mortgage, you have, you have a two-story house you lived in for 30 years, you sell it, you bank $100,000, you bought something for less. Now, if you want to do that, you've got to come up with $200,000, you know, in order to stay in the township. And there's, you know, we can't control the economy, obviously, and we're not going to talk politics. Because you know, my dad was a builder, so I, and a developer, so I know that business as well as anyone in this room does, and obviously, a developer's going to do whatever he or she can do to maximize profits, because we still live in a capitalistic society. So ultimately, you know, I don't think the overlay had bad intentions, I just think what we have now probably needs more than a slight tweaking. I think it needs evisceration, quite honestly. I think we need to go back to the drawing board, and I think there should be an overlay district, but I think it needs to be more thought out about where these parcels are and what these neighborhoods need to look like. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in, but that's my two cents on it.
Well, I just wanted to point out that, I agree with what Mrs. Merrill stated, because obviously she and I were on council at the same time then, but I really don't think that whatever we do can affect the value that you have to pay for whatever's going to be built. I mean, it's gone. And maybe rightfully so, you know. I mean, I remember having a discussion with a lawyer that used to live in the township who's since retired, but, you know, I said to her, I was kind of upset because, you know, a lot of the older people in my neighborhood, you know, had to move, they, you know, they just couldn't maintain their house and things like that. She's like, you know, sometimes that's good for the community, because you get people come in, buy those homes, fix them up, have kids, you know, and in a way, she's right. But I do, and I've always recognized that the overlay has benefits beyond diversity and trying to make it more affordable. There are benefits to that. And I don't know if we have to reinvent the wheel. I think that some of the things that I didn't like about it were actually addressed by several builders here that commented tonight, and I just think that to start over from scratch and spend more money for what we already know about what happened, I don't know if that's the right thing to do. I think that, I think we could tweak, I think some of these properties may not be as amendable to, may only be developed because of the way they are, they have to be some sort of overlay district. But I don't know if I'd want to just start from scratch and spend more money on studies and public input. I mean, I think the things that are bothering me from looking at some of these things is that they're just smack up on these skinny roads, there's no place to park, there's nothing between the two, and I think, you know, Mr. Taylor, you know, pointed out a lot of interesting ways to handle that. I think we can get from point A to point B without starting over from scratch and spending more money, but I don't know. I mean, it depends on what everybody else wants to do, but I do think that there are benefits to not only the community, but to people that own the property to have an overlay. I just think that the way it's coming out now is not, in my opinion, the way, the way they should look.
Well, there's no question, it saves us money in the long run, because there's less streets.
Right, less streets, and less infrastructure, and less stuff that's tore out, and, I mean, I liked all those aspects of that overlay district. I just, I just think that the way they're being built can be tweaked in a way that it addresses a lot of the things I didn't like about the way they're being put off.
Anyone else from council have a comment?
Well, for those that, you wouldn't remember anyway, that I was part of the committee that worked with Mrs. McLaughlin and worked with the out-of-towner that we had from Ohio that had, you know, a lot of his inferences worked very well in Ohio, and my daughter lives out there, and I think I was bonded with a lot of the optimism of looking at properties that worked out there, thinking it was going to work here in Pittsburgh. And I just have to say, it's not worked here in Peters to the vision that I thought we were headed. We need to figure out if there is a way to restore that same vision. I visioned keeping the trees and keeping some of the hillsides and keeping some of the farmland, and maybe even farm animals, you know, in and among some of these planned developments, but...
Apparently, you can't do that, as we learned tonight.
Yeah, you can't spray them, I guess, I don't know. And probably the manure is penalty wise, too, but anyway. I don't think council is intending to abandon the concept, it's taking a pause to look at what we have and how we can get back and capture the concept that we originally were dealing with. But at least that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
For adjournment.
I moved that we schedule the public hearing on, what was the date, June?
Can I just give you just a modification of that motion? Just, go ahead, and we can't do June 19th, because I'm out of town that day.
Well, that's why I picked it.
I know. You're not doing the 19th?
No, it's going to be a different date, they're going to tell us what date, but the nature of the fact that this is, you want pending ordinance status, this motion needs to be precise, and I would suggest the solicitor help us with that.
John, you make the, you dictate the motion, John.
Okay, here's what, what I want to do is, if we can, like we talked about earlier, just, we could do the ordinance adoption the same day as well, so that the council will vote to advertise for both, the public hearing and for ordinance adoption. But here, I'll read it, just a modification of what was...
Excuse me.
Peters Township Council will advertise for a public hearing for June, do we have a date? June 5th, work for people?
Works for me.
Works for me.
June 5th?
Yes. For June 5th, 2023, and for adoption of an ordinance, amending Peters Township Code of Ordinance, Chapter 440, Zoning Section 400, District Classification, in that the ordinance as presented tonight is designated by council as having pending ordinance status.
So moved.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lowery. Payroll and bills, Dr. Perosco.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payrolls and bills, they are all in good standing order, make the motion to approve.
Second, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lowery, correspondence, anything we need to talk about?
Yes, there's two pieces of correspondence you want to bring to your attention. The first is a letter from Carol Lee Hemington and Richard Thomas. They own a piece of property on Maple Lane, that is a wooded piece of property that is immediately adjacent to wooded open space. They're offering to donate that piece of property to the township. It would be, it would be a property that would be difficult to develop, it's probably, its best use is probably as open space. The question they have is, would we be willing to accept it? It's the staff's recommendation that we ought to do that, and the only thing they're asking is that we assume the cost of preparing the deed and...
That's right across.
And there was a restriction, too, I thought I saw in... Yes, they wanted to stay in this... I have no problem with that. I mean, I, do you need a motion for that? Um, I think if we have a consensus of council, I think we can move forward, because I think at some point in time, this is going to end up coming back here again, so...
But we would want, we want proof they have clear title, though.
Yes.
They're not taking that subject any week.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think that's a consensus of council.
Yeah, anybody care?
No.
Nope.
We don't need to maintain it.
Right. We don't have to do one.
Okay. The other letter in your docket is from Mr. Schultz, the project manager from Plino Construction regarding the roundabout. And what is in your docket is a schedule that talks about construction on this site. Our intention is, in fact, we have already on our website, to keep people posted as best we know about the activity that's occurring out there. Now, where he has indicated that construction will not begin on the intersection until April, the fact of the matter is, work may well begin on there as soon as next week from the standpoint that utility relocation is required to make this project move forward. So if you will recall, one of the things that the township did was to provide funding to the water company to extend the water line through this project to the other side for the purposes of providing potable water to three homes. That work may well begin next week or the week after, and so, you know, that will cause a restriction on the road, but... And we're going to put that on a website or something, so people... Yes. One of the things they're going to be doing is, before they actually start construction on this, there'll be signs in the intersection notifying people that just when construction begins, so...
All right, thank you, Paul. All right, anyone want to discuss any of these various board or committee reports?
I just would note that I reviewed the police report, and I didn't see any incidents of burglaries for a month of January, just so somebody, everybody knows.
Okay, miscellaneous, recreation center membership for families of township employees.
So one of the things when the rec center was built, council allowed employees to be able to be treated as residents for the purposes of joining the rec center and participating in programs. There was, there's been a request from a couple employees asking whether or not we could extend that to family members. I don't think it's going to cost the tax if anything... Immediate family members? Immediate family members. Yeah. Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not like we're giving them money to walk in the door. The other thing is, we have this joint workshop coming up next Monday with the school district.
We're hosting that one.
We're hosting it here. Seth is going to be doing a presentation on the developments that are occurring in Peters Township. The school, our officers will likely be in attendance, the school district has requested that. We are going to have on a discussion of your plan for junior councilman interns or whatever. We're going to have a discussion with the school board with regard to that as well. Is there anything else council would like to see on that agenda?
Yeah, the pool, the public access to the pool.
School pool.
Also like to...
They kind of put that back on us, though.
The school pool.
School pool, obviously.
If they have any plans on building a stadium, you know, the new high school.
Or any outdoor...
Or any outdoor fields for any outdoor sport.
I do think they were going, I think, I'll make sure that's on there. I think Dr. Brent had already talked about their capital.
It's not highly important, but we need to discuss the entrance signs.
Yeah.
For Rolling Hills Park. They still want to do that or not?
Yeah, because if not, we're going to.
Right, because if not, we'll just put ours in.
Paul, I will be out of town. I'll be in Texas.
I'm already here.
All right.
So will I be?
What's that?
I will be out of town.
We'll make sure it's 3-3, so.
Can I move for adjournment?
Uh, well, anybody have anything they want on the next agenda?
Yeah, so I know, like, Mr. Ross, two meetings ago, I asked last meeting about the master plan for Rolling Hills Park. We haven't gotten any.
We're going to bring that to you at the next meeting. Where it needs to start is, council needs to adopt a set of governing guidelines. And also, we need to talk about what the processes that you want to use. So I will give you at the next meeting, I'll provide you a copy of what the guidelines were that was used when it was initially, the initial plan was done, and what that process was. So you can tell us whether or not that's.
All right.
That's a 13.
That's it?
Brief executive session.
All right, we are adjourned.